Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, January 24th, 2022. The time is 5:34 PM. And I will turn it over to our city clerk, Josh Sticker, for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Liggins.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg has not yet joined us. Councilmember Storson.
Here.
And Councilmember Wook.
Here.
And five councilmembers present.
Five present. Are we missing more than Councilmember Rothenberg?
Apologies, our councilmember Barber, who is yet to be sworn in.
Thank you. Okay, I thought I, I thought I kind of, just making sure. Okay, um, so the first thing we're going to do, speaking of councilmember Barber, is your official oath of office. So we'll do what we did. So councilmember Barber was in last week at City Hall and she took her oath down in council chambers. But we're going to formalize that tonight in our council meeting as well, even though she's already official. But we're going to do our oath of office. So Mary will just do it sitting down and just have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mary Barber, do solemnly swear.
I, Mary Barber, do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And will to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly faithfully diligently.
Truly faithfully and diligently.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Of city council member for the city of Gig Harbor.
Of city council member for the city of Gig Harbor.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
As such duties are prescribed by law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations again to councilmember Barber. Welcome. We're so pleased to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Um, I would like you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I don't know if there's a flag coming on the screen, but if there isn't, we'll just repeat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Yes, councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to pull a consent agenda number six and off the consent agenda and insert it as new business number three.
Okay, if there are no objections from council, we will take consent agenda six and move it to new business number one. Okay. And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Consent agenda.
Okay, second. Second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so tonight we are honored to have Congressman Derek Kilmer with us to share some federal funding opportunities. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. We really appreciate your time and taking the time to come and talk to us about some things that are coming up on the federal side of things. So take it away.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, and good to see everybody. Thanks for, for having me. I feel like I should apologize at the get go that my 12-year-old is doing trumpet practice upstairs. Trumpeting, that's, it's not, it's not an animal. It's just beginning to learn the trumpet. Beyond that, though, I do want to start by just saying thanks for your service and congratulations to your newest council member. It goes without saying that these have been really challenging times for our country and for our community. And I say our community, even though I'm right outside your city limits. But this pandemic has not only been one of the more, most challenging health crises of our lifetimes, but certainly challenging from an economic standpoint, too. And I'm conscious of the fact that each of you have been on the front lines just trying to help your community. And I want to say thank you to that, for that, both to the council. And I, I want to particularly call out the city staff as well, just very grateful for your leadership and for your partnership. I do think it's just worth remembering how far we've come over this last year. Just a year ago, as we, as 2020 came to a close, the headlines were pretty dire. There were articles about food banks facing record demand, about record housing instability. Far too many of our local employers were still really on their heels. At that time, most of our kids were still in virtual school. And most of us parents were realizing that we were not great at teaching middle school math. And we had not yet, at that point, seen the widespread rollout of vaccines. And that's why early in 2021, Congress passed the American Rescue Plan, which was really geared towards helping folks get vaccinated, helping our kids get back to school safely, supporting our local businesses through things like the Paycheck Protection Program and the Restaurant Grant Program and the Shuttered Venue Program for things like our movie theaters and live event venues. And importantly, to provide immediate and direct relief to folks to help them keep a roof over their heads and feed their families and pay their bills. It provided a huge boost for our economy. Since the American Rescue Plan passed, we've seen over 6 million jobs created in our country. Over 210 million Americans are now vaccinated. Unemployment claims are the lowest they've been since 1969. I mentioned this in part because importantly, that law also provided substantial resources to state and local governments. And just last week, we saw, and hopefully you saw, final rulemaking by the administration that provided some additional flexibility to local governments to make investments needed by our community. Those funds can be used to expand access to testing and vaccines, to fund water sewer and broadband projects, to respond to public health and economic impacts, including investments to make services like child care and affordable housing more available. But beyond that, as you likely know, and I think the primary reason I was invited to visit was that Congress, at the end of last year, passed and the president signed the new bipartisan infrastructure law. That's a law that's about putting people to work now and laying the foundation for economic growth over the long haul by investing in roads and bridges, transit, water systems, ports and broadband. It's about recognizing that we can't compete in a 21st century economy with 19th and 20th century infrastructure. So why does this matter? Well, it matters in a whole bunch of ways. We are blessed to have 19 ports in the district that I represent that are amazing engines of economic opportunity. The, this new law provides substantial investments for port-related infrastructure, for repair and maintenance backlogs. For all of our coastal communities, there are dollars for resilience to deal with climate change and rising sea levels and more severe storms. It matters to every one of us who is tired of sitting in traffic. I, probably like many of you, I'm conscious of the fact that in many parts of our region, the speed limits are only there for nostalgic purposes. And this law will make really transformative investments in repairing and rebuilding our roads and bridges. I will mention, a lot of those dollars will flow through the state. Based on formula funding alone, our state would expect to receive $4.7 billion for federal aid highway portion programs, over 600 million for bridge replacement and repair programs over the next five years. There's other priorities, too. It makes historic investments in transit. We know how important that is, not just in terms of taking vehicles off the road, but helping workers get to a job, which matters to our workers and employers. It matters to all of us who have struggled because we don't have internet access. Unfortunately, that's a lot of the people that I represent. The district I represent is in the bottom third of the country when it comes to access to high-speed internet. And we've learned over the course of this pandemic that access to the internet is not just about whether you can watch only murders in the building on Hulu, which you should because it's terrific. But it's about whether your kid can attend virtual classes or whether you can have that telehealth appointment or whether people can zoom in for your city council meeting. And unfortunately, far too many people can't right now because they don't have high-speed internet access. Thankfully, this new law treats internet access almost like rural electrification was in prior generations and is expected to connect about over a quarter of a million Washingtonians to reliable high-speed internet. I would also mention that there are important provisions related to investments in clean water and in protecting our environment. And that includes stormwater, wastewater, clean water. And importantly, and I joined the mayor and some of the council members in the fall for a culvert tour. There's, as part of this new law, a billion-dollar program that I led the charge on in the House, that Senator Cantwell led the charge on in the Senate, to remove and replace failing culverts so that we can restore fish passage and help our salmon populations make the recovery that we need them to. So one of my goals for 2022 is to make sure that now that we see these significant infrastructure dollars, that those dollars come to our region and help address our problems. So part of my goal in attending tonight is to just tell you what we know in terms of being able to access these funds. I will say upfront, there's still a bunch that we don't know because the administration is still doing rulemaking on some of this. They're still setting some of the funding priorities for various programs. But let me walk through at least some of what we know. First, let's talk about water. This bill includes $23.4 billion for drinking water and wastewater infrastructure, for safe drinking water, for funds to treat wastewater, including things like sewer overflows and stormwater. It does that by reauthorizing and revising the Clean Water State Revolving Fund and the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. If that sounds like those dollars are flowing through the state, it's because they are. A lot of these water dollars will flow through the state. There's also funds for lead service line replacement and removal of PFAS chemicals as well. If you haven't already, I would encourage you to connect with state-level stakeholders, including our state legislative delegation. As a lot of these state revolving funds, funds will receive the bulk of the funding flowing in the water and wastewater arena. There are some other smaller grant programs in this space that may be of interest. And we've put together kind of a two-pager of, of resources. Included in that is a Congressional Research Service report that details some of those smaller grant programs. And if you haven't already received that, I'll make sure my staff follows up and gets those details to you. On top of that, we had a call early last week with the U.S. Department of Transportation, which will be the lead agency on this law and on, on a whole lot of the programs here. The USDOT will oversee a number of pots of money where projects can compete direct to the DOT. That includes the RAISE Grant Program, which is the Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Program. That has historically had a maximum award of $25 million. There's $8 billion for the infra grants, which are generally projects of regional and national economic significance. Those are larger grants and have been as large as 50 million. There's the Bridge Investment Program for Bridge Repair and Replacement. That's on top of the funds that flow directly to the state for that purpose. There's a program called the Protect Program that is about resiliency of infrastructure. There's the Safe Streets for All Program, which is focused on reducing traffic accidents and fatalities for drivers and pedestrians and for cyclists. And there's a couple of railroad, rail infrastructure programs as well. So each of those, as we find out, as we get word of the notice of funding opportunity, we will push that out to the city. And I want you to hear me say it. If you've got questions, if you want to get in touch with a point of contact at USDOT, we are happy to help with that. If, if you want a letter of support, we're happy to entertain that. No, I think I saw Dale Learn on the screen. They know our office well and we're happy to be a partner to the city. Because again, I want to see these funds come to our community and to our region. I mentioned a lot of these dollars will flow as formula funds to the state. And again, as the, as the city has funding priorities, it's important to be sure you're connecting with the state legislative delegation because a whole lot of these dollars will flow through the state for highway and bridge investments. The state broadband office will see a share of the $65 billion that is slated for broadband investments. There's a program called the BEAT Program, which is focused on providing connection to underserved areas, to unserved areas and to community anchor organizations. The state, our state will see an initial minimal amount of, minimum amount of $100 million. And then it's expected that they'll see far more as, as, as the dollars continue to flow. The state broadband office will, will get that money. And then it's expected to competitively award subgrants to, for the further broadband deployment activity. So happy to answer questions about that, too. And let me just mention a couple other things that came up when we had the call with the USDOT. They mentioned that, that you may qualify, you may be eligible for more than one of these funding streams. And they're, they suggested to encourage you to apply for multiple pots of funding. Beyond that, the administration has laid out seven priorities for, for the DOT pots of money. They are creating and sustaining good-paying jobs, improving safety, combating inequity and improving quality of life for all, spurring economic competitiveness, combating climate change, promoting environmental sustainability and driving innovation. And I share that because when we met with the USDOT, they said to encourage you to highlight those aspects in any application materials, should you make application for some of these pots of money. So all of that has been rearview mirror. Let me, if, if I, Madam Mayor, if I have two more minutes, I'm happy to do a little bit of windshield and then wrap it up and take questions or let you be on with the rest of your agenda. Do I have two more minutes?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Real quickly, everything I talked about is stuff that has passed. One thing that has passed the House but has not yet passed the Senate is the Build Back Better Act. There's been a lot of press attention to the day-to-day and sometimes even the minute-to-minute negotiations on this bill. I, I do want to just take a second and talk about what this bill is about. And in a nutshell, it's about trying to give people a break and reduce costs for American families. I, like many people, are concerned about rising costs in this country. And this bill is really about trying to reduce costs for a whole lot of things that American families need, reducing the cost of healthcare, reducing the cost of prescription drugs, reducing childcare costs. Under the provisions in this bill, it would reduce, it would cut in half spending on childcare for most American families. It would deliver two years of preschool for every three- and four-year-old in America. It'd give more than 35 million American families a major tax cut by extending the expanded child tax credit. It would reduce costs for, for college. We've seen, unfortunately, college debt surpassed credit card debt in this country. And so it would increase financial aid, increase the Pell Grant and expand some of the Department of Labor workforce development programs, which as we talk, talk to, and I think the mayor and councilwoman Denson were on with the chamber and the TCC leadership for the chamber's legislative kickoff. You know, TCC runs a lot of these workforce development programs. And seeing an increase in funding through the Department of Labor could be a real boon to, to TCC. And then finally, addressing housing affordability as well, which I know is a priority for the council as well, by making the most significant federal investment in housing affordability in more than a generation, addressing the public housing repair backlog and investing in the National Housing Trust Fund to build and preserve more affordable homes. Moody's Analytics just did an analysis of this legislation and found that it would spur economic growth and ease inflation, which matters, too. So that's a little bit in the, in the windshield. We'll see how all of that gets worked out with the Senate. But I don't think I wanted to just mention, and I saw Courtney from my team is on the Zoom. Half of my team in the district does what we call casework, where if someone has an issue with any federal agency, we go to work on their behalf. Oftentimes, in the last year, that's been with the Small Business Administration as people are trying to navigate some of these COVID relief programs. We're happy to help. Oftentimes, it's with the VA or with the Social Security Administration or Medicare. The IRS, lately, it's been a lot of people who are traveling for the first time in a long time and didn't realize they have expired passports. Yes, we can even help with that. So I share that with you because if anybody's watching who has an issue or know of someone who has an issue, please don't hesitate them to, to, to send them our way. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to stop talking and take questions or if you've got other stuff on the agenda and want to get on to it, I'm not offended.
No, thank you again for being here and for providing all of that information. That is extremely helpful and very good to know for some direction on applying for some of these grants for things that we are trying to accomplish in the city. So thank you for letting us know that those are available for sure. And I'll probably follow up with you on those to get, get more specifics on, on those. Any councilmembers have any questions for Congressman Kilmer? Okay, I'm not seeing any at the moment. Well, thank you again. Oh, I see one, councilmember Wook.
Congressman Kilmer, I just want to thank you so much for being here. We have a number of projects that would fit really wonderfully under the Safe Streets project. And I know that we've applied. And so we look forward to some sort of answer on that at some point in time. But thanks for all your votes in Washington and trying to get us all some extra funding for our city. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, councilwoman. And with a lot of these programs that I mentioned, they're existing programs that have historically been way oversubscribed. And it should put the city, hopefully in, in our region, in a much better position competitively to see these. You know, a lot of these programs, you know, they get $10, $20, $30 of requests for $1 of grant. And so they end up inevitably saying no to a bunch of stuff. Actually, seeing a substantial federal investment, I think, could help the federal government be a better partner to cities like yours, cities like ours. And I'm eager to see that happen.
Thank you. I guess Dale Learn.
Well, I just wanted to thank you, Congressman Kilmer and Courtney, for, for coming and talking to the city. And I want to thank you for being as enthusiastic as you always are and so skilled at your job. And often member, often staff reflect their member. And you have such wonderful staff, both at home and in DC. And you mentioned that the majority of the new laws, formula funding, and there are mechanisms for that, even through the MPO and PSRC and the state. But 30% of it, you mentioned some of it is discretionary. And some are new and some are old, as you also mentioned. And as, as, and I've talked to your staff about this in DC, Heather and others. But, you know, as local governments apply for these funds, and you may have seen, your staff probably saw that the White House put out a schedule last Friday. It's, it's a little bit aspirational, like first quarter, next quarter. But because they don't know, like you said, some, some are new programs with new rulemakings and some they don't, they're waiting for the CR, they're waiting for a new, they're waiting actually for the fiscal year, for a lot of them, the fiscal year 22 bill to get finalized, if it does, and I think it will. You're on that committee, as you know, and we all think, yes, sir. But, you know, you know, and through the COVID relief, a lot of the larger elements of local government, and not that they don't have needs, got a lot of the bulk of the funding. So a lot of the smaller local governments who have significant needs, like, like the city of Gig Harbor, got probably disproportionately less. So as you and your staff work with folks like us on these grants and as they come out, we hope that you can put a little more enthusiastic support and help. And I know you well, in us trying to get funding for the things that we need. And again, as you said, you're going to, you're working with us and others to, to make sure we have all the information and have offered support. And we look forward to this year and in the next four years, as this law continues to be implemented.
You got it. Count us on the home team. We're eager to help.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dale. I guess, Energy Administrator Tony Paseke.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll have to admit that Dale just stole about two-thirds of my thunder. But that's okay. That's okay. Again, I want to say.
Not on purpose. I didn't know what you were going to say, Tony. It wasn't, it wasn't planned.
Again, I want to say thank you, Congressman Kilmer, for being here. And Dale mentioned the, the federal government budget process right now. We're still operating underneath a continuing resolution. We're hoping that the, the actual budget statute will get hopefully passed through Congress since its presence. That, that's pretty quickly. Can you give us just a quick update as to how that's going? Because until that gets done, some of these grant programs are going to be sitting and waiting.
Well, forward progress on a omnibus spending bill. Right now, things are under a continuing resolution until mid-February. We had a briefing for the Appropriations Committee. And the plan is to try to get to an omnibus before the end of, of that continuing resolution. So stay tuned. For a long time, there wasn't negotiation happening, to my terrible chagrin, because continuing resolutions are a really bad way to do business. It's bad for taxpayers and particularly in a district like the one I represent, where the largest employer is the federal government, it's the Navy. It fosters so much uncertainty and inefficiency. So we're pushing like heck to get that done.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
I guess, councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Congressman Kilmer, thank you for taking your time out tonight to speak with us. Just as a side note, I echo your comments on the continuing resolution. When I worked at the Corps, it was an awful time to work during that. Everything was so messed up, couldn't believe it. But I want to talk about a little bit, if you could maybe amplify a little bit on that culvert removal bill. I believe you had a relatively significant part to play in that. Are those funds available? When might they be available? And are they going to split it up just by the grant applications? Are they going to split it up evenly by each state? Or how does that, how might you see that working?
Last I looked, we don't know yet, the, in terms of timing. The statute was written so that there was kind of broad eligibility, that it wouldn't just flow through the state, but that municipalities, counties and tribal entities would be able to make application as well. So just acknowledging that we have a lot of needs on that front, that the, the push was to make eligibility so that while, while the state lost a court case, there are cities and counties that have culvert problems, too. And so that, that was with intent that we, we took that approach.
Do you happen to know which agency is going to be managing those funds?
I think it's under USDOT, but Dale, I saw you unmuted. So I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Congressman Kilmer is exactly right. The eligibility is pretty broad. State, local and tribal governments can apply. It does, the statute does require consultation with Commerce and Interior. And it's a new program, as Congressman Kilmer mentioned earlier. Some of the newer programs will take more time. It was not on the White House list of Friday, and I think it was because it is new. Intelligence is that there could take probably mid-year or early spring before we, they've done that consultation with the two other agencies and figured this out. So it'll go through DOT, but they have to have that consultation because of those fish interests. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I could really use Dale Learn as my phone-a-friend on every one of these councils.
Well, we've both been in the federal game for a long time, sir. So, you know, it's, thank you.
Oh, we appreciate you both. I guess, councilmember Rothenberg.
Councilman Kilmer, you mentioned that the Navy is the area's biggest employer. And I was wondering, since we have the shipyard out there, we have the sub base and all the military bases out there, and Highway 16 is the primary way to get there. Is there ever any emphasis or priority given to, for instance, Route 16? Because in the interest of national defense, that it should get a priority over walking trails or something?
We just had a call today, in fact, with the State Secretary of Transportation and a very large coalition in the West Sound that includes the Navy and the business community and others, focused specifically on the Gorst Corridor, sort of as Highway 16 sort of rounds the bend for a number of reasons. One, because that is. For a number of reasons, one, because that is you know, there's congestion there. Particularly at shipyard opening and closing times. Two, because there's real resilience concerns. The Navy's concern is actually less about congestion and more the potential that, you know, as we see sea level rise, God forbid, an earthquake, it's the only route in to the only west coast shipyard that can service a carrier. And that's a problem. And so they have real concerns from a resilience standpoint. There's even opportunity from an economic standpoint in that that corridor is right, you know, what, five minutes away from the Bremerton Airport, the Port of Bremerton, which has the largest industrially zoned property in Western Washington. It's owned for like ten thousand jobs, which is just a massive opportunity if we can fix that road infrastructure, so we have already flagged that, while that's not sort of you know, the Olympic Drive exit, it does matter to our region, because I think we'll certainly if we can maintain and grow those shipyard jobs, if we see some economic development happen at the Port of Bremerton, that's more opportunity for residents of the city of Gig Harbor as well. There is also a DOD program for off-base infrastructure that we've been trying to grow. I've been trying to grow in this job. Not just for naval-based kits app, but for joint-based Lewis McCord as well, because we know we have enormous traffic problems and other infrastructure needs. We've, to some degree, thankfully been victims of our success, seeing the growth of our of our military installations in this area. That's great from a jobs standpoint, but there's growing pains for the communities tied to those installations, and so having the Department of Defense be a partner in that is important, and we've been pushing for funding for that for that program.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay.
Well, I would I would simply like to say, Congressman, if there's ever anything that we can do to help you, if you need letters or need a testimony via Zoom, we would be happy to provide that on your behalf. So just have your staff get ahold of us, we will jump.
Thank you. Well, and again, let me just end, because I think we're out of questions, by saying thank you again to the mayor and the council for your leadership, and thank you to the city staff. I'm very grateful for the work you do and know that you're on the front lines, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next presentation comes from our, the Executive Director of the Harbor History Museum, Stephanie Lyle. She will be presenting on the Maritime Gallery.
Well, thank you. It's really an honor to be here and to follow Congressman Kilmer. That's big shoes to fill. But here's a microcosm project for you that I kind of echo some of the the big picture things he was talking about. Since we have so many new council members, I thought I would give you a little backstory on the Maritime Gallery project, and I do have a slideshow that I'll I'll share screen and kind of walk you through the project. So for those of you not familiar with the Maritime Gallery project, we do nickname it two-two-four-six-zero-six because that is the unique vessel registration number for the Shenandoah. And of course, the Shenandoah is a, I'm going to jump back for a sec. Shenandoah is a twenty-five, sixty-five foot wooden vessel, which I'll get to in a second. But I did want to acknowledge that the museum stands on the ancestral lands of the Skoobosh people. And we are very honored to be part of the stewardship of the Tualaka site. So on that site, of course, is the museum, the Austin Park, and of course, our Maritime Gallery that is currently open on three sides, and of course, the vessel Shenandoah is center stage there. We have been working on the boat's restoration almost since it was pulled out of the water in two thousand and three. And it was actually donated to the museum by the Janovich family, who fished the boat from about nineteen sixty-seven. But we call this boat the One Boat With Three Lives, the Tender, Saner, and Teacher. As the boat was originally built at Scansy Shipyard in nineteen twenty-five as a tender to go to Alaska. A family venture of Pasco Doritich, his son John, and his son-in-law Nick Bez. Folks in the fishing business know Nick Bez as the cannery guy, who became a multimillionaire, was kind of heralded as the Horatio Alger of of the Northwest, and so interesting ties and great stories, in addition to some really rich women's history aspects, because some of the Janovich women were part of the first females to actually fish in the commercial fishing business, so that said, the boat has been just they're making amazing progress on the restoration of the boat, but the project is actually a three-part project. It is the boat, it is the gallery, and it is the exhibition. But I do want to mention that we are taking our inspiration from international projects. There are not that many museums in the whole country, let alone the whole world, that have these large vessels on display. Excuse me. One of the boats that we went to look at, first off, was the Asgard, which is at the National Museum of Ireland. And this is a vessel that was used during the troubles in Ireland and was fully, fully restored. Or as they say, conserve in in, excuse me, I have a tickle in my throat. Was fully, fully conserved in this old gymnasium, and then they renovated the building to house the boat and protect all of the work that was done on it. Again, this boat's not going back in the water, so all these boats that are on permanent display are for one reason or another, not going back in the water, and the Shenandoah shares that same story. This is the Vasa in Stockholm, Sweden. And this is a massive boat that has just an amazing story. It really only sailed for literally about two hours before it sunk. And I won't get into all of the details there, but the Vasa Museum has been a huge, huge drop for Stockholm for many, many years. Actually, since the work began in the nineteen eighties. Another boat that we're very interested in in comparing notes with is at the Maritime Museum in Vancouver, BC, and this is the Saint Rock. This is one of the only boats that you can actually step aboard, and that is a feature that makes the restoration and conservation of a vessel doubly more important, because you have to have a sturdy enough boat for people to actually step aboard. If you just do basic conservation, and you're just holding it together, and it's too fragile for public use, then that's a different kind of exhibition strategy. And of course, lastly, this is the Vasa, which is one of the the Northern Exploration vessels. That is, or excuse me, not the Vasa, excuse me, the Goja in Norway, and this is quite a stunning, stunning vessel as well. And then lastly, this is the Columbia Lightship that's down at the Columbia River Maritime Museum, so on a local level, we also have a few places, but Columbia River is probably one of the largest maritime museums on the west coast and has a number of working vessels, both on display and as step abords. So one of the things that we wanted to do when we undertook this project was to really focus in on what is the strategy for saving this boat? The boat literally was full of rot. We have pictures of fungus roots just hanging from the walls when they removed the ceiling planks inside the hull, and so we really want to think about what's the what's the most suitable way to do this? Given the boat's history, and because it was built in Gig Harbor, it was fished by two Gig Harbor families. On the right, we will restore the boat back to its original nineteen twenty-five bulwarks configuration with portholes and everything, and on the starboard side, it will actually be restored back to about the nineteen seventies, when the Janovich family, seventies, eighties, when the Janovich family was actively fishing the boat. And in many cases, it's been multi-generational in both of these families, and it's interesting that Tony Janovich was actually a third cousin of Pasco Doritich, and was born the same year that Shenandoah was launched. So great story. This gives you a visual on the two different bulwark construction. For those of you that are really into the fine details of boat building, you'll notice on the starboard side, the upper the upper image is the boat in about the eighties, and that's the fishing configuration side that will be replicating, and then the nineteen twenty-five side is the lower image, and you can see that the bulwarks construction was quite a bit lower, and it was for a variety of different reasons. They had also rebuilt the deckhouse in nineteen forty-nine, so we have restored the deckhouse back to that period, nineteen forty-nine, through Save America's Treasures Grant that we received, and I'll show you a few pictures of that here in a second, too. One of the things we've had to do extensively on this project is to research the materials that were actually used in the vessel. We've discovered that we have one of the last samples of French blue linen formica, which was the first formica ever made for industrial purposes, and they used it on fishing boats as an experiment, and they don't make any of those formicas anymore, but before it became common for residential use, they used it in industrial settings, and fishing boats were one of them. The the vessel in this picture here is the Fort Bragg, which also fished out of Gig Harbor in the thirties and forties, and was owned by the Mandich family down in Aberdeen, but also fished with all the Gig Harbor boats when they were up in the San Juans on a very regular basis, and we have photographs of the Shenandoah and the Fort Bragg moored together, so we were able to go up to Port Townsend and actually collect a number of artifacts from that boat, particularly the portholes, which you can see in this picture. Because the Shenandoah did not have her portholes any longer, and we needed correct era portholes to be able to fully restore that nineteen twenty-five side, so we will be using the portholes from the Fort Bragg aboard the Shenandoah, as well as a couple other pieces from that vessel. This is the boat as she appeared, oh gosh, a few weeks ago, when we actually had a very tall lift on site, and we were able to take some photographs from up above. But this shows you a really great image of the restored deckhouse, which I mentioned, and I'll show you some amazing pictures of that in a second, but the flybridge was fully restored. The stack has has been returned to the top of the boat, has been on the boat for probably, gosh, nearly twenty, at least fifteen years, I should say. The foredeck had to be completely removed because it was completely rotted out, and they are just now beginning the rebuild of the foredeck. And they have to rebuild the deck before they can rebuild the bulwark, so it's a step-by-step process. But before they put the beams on here, we had to put the engine in the boat, so we have a nineteen thirty-six Atlas Imperial Engine that is in the collection. It was originally in the fishing boat Norman B, and then it was used to power Bud McInnes's sawmill. And that has been sitting in our gallery, and we have an amazing volunteer, by name Craig Johnson, who's done all of the restoration work on the engine. And we got a grant from the RPM Foundation to bring on three interns to help with that major restoration project over the last year. So the last step of that was to finally set it into the boat, so a lot of prep work had to be done in the engine bay, and then they dropped it in piece by piece, reassembled it, and then scooted it back into position. This is what the deckhouse looked when they first began working on the the restoration of it. A lot of times, it's experimental. You have to sort of take it apart a little bit by a little bit to see how bad it really was. Well, turns out it was pretty bad. So there was a lot of work that had to be done, including rescarfing the ends of every single beam that make up the ceiling or the floor of the flybridge. Once the outer sheath of plywood came off, you can see where it's rotted, and you know, in through this area. The window sills were all redone, and then all of the yellow cedar framework inside of that wall, much of it had to be rebuilt as well, because it had really taken a beating, not only since it was in the water, but since it was in the gallery, because it's getting so much outside exposure from the weather that blows in off of the harbor. It just continued to deteriorate as it sat in gallery. So this is what it looks like now. Amazing difference, and it really looks fantastic. So our effort to enclose the gallery is also the effort to preserve this vessel, because it really is iconic of our whole region, our boatbuilding history, our fishing history, and women's history, so many different aspects. So this is the original concept rendering that we had done in two thousand and nineteen, and some of that has changed since we originally proposed this, but not that drastically. The influencers on that change have been the change in the Washington State Energy Code, so it changed the skining of the building just a bit, but it still looks pretty fantastic. This is what has gone to the Design Review Board and to the Planning Department for approval for permitting. This is a exhibition rendering, this is a concept rendering of what it will look like in what in the area we call below the waterline. We want people to understand what it's like to be a salmon, basically. That is being caught or fished for by boats of this caliber, so this, you can, you're actually underneath the water in this in this moment, you see the hull of the ship, and you see the the same skiff and the floats at the waterline. Learn about the different types of salmon that are typically caught, as well as other schooling fish that pursiners typically will catch. We'll talk about fishing innovations, and you know, a number of other critical pieces in terms of the shape of the hull, propulsion, all that kind of stuff. And then up aboard, and again, this is a really important aspect of the project, is allowing people to step on board. Not every vessel that is restored allows this to be done, but we feel that it's a really important part of the experiential learning opportunities that we can provide at the museum. So this is just a glimpse into the galley of the Shenandoah. As if people were visiting and checking things out. We want to recreate the experience of being on on the crew of a fishing boat, and so we'll be developing special programming that goes along with that. Some sneak peeks into the lives of the skipper, the crew members, and even the cooks onboard the boat. This is a a rough sketch of the exhibit pathway, we called the the visitor experience, and there's actually two entries into this gallery space, so we're creating slightly different types of experiences from one end to the other. But generally, the the large vessel in the center is Shenandoah, the smaller vessel is the Thunderbird Hull Number One, which we are also actively in the restoration phase with that vessel, so it's coming along super well also. Okay, so why is this important, and what are the community benefits? We want to continue our free admission program, which we started in twenty eighteen, thanks to a grant from the city of Gig Harbor, and we we currently, this last year, we had fifty-five hundred general public visitors. And in twenty nineteen, we actually had twelve thousand, so we're projecting that as time goes by and people feel more confident in traveling and visiting, that our visitorship will actually return to those pre-pandemic levels, and that has a huge impact on our whole community. In addition to preservation pride, which with the Shenandoah project was the only project in Washington State selected by the National Park Service and the Institute of Museum and Library Services for the Save America's Treasure Grant, so that was a huge, huge coup for us. And to be able to share that story is is really remarkable. And then, of course, there's positive economic impact. Everyone loves the dollars and cents of things. But according to Inspire Washington, which is our state's arts and culture advocacy organization, is the average museum visitor spends about thirty-two dollars in the area, so that's about one hundred and seventy-six thousand to about three hundred and eighty-four thousand per year. On a, you know, sliding scale for numbers of visitors, but that's a big impact on the local economy. We have raised to date two million, seven seventy-two thousand, three hundred and forty-eight, and that was as of like yesterday when I counted up, but we still have four hundred thousand more to go, and I will say that that raise to date is also pledged to date, and that includes the contribution that was proposed to the city and approved in the last budget for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two year. These are some of the major grants and pledges we've received so far. Major funding has come from the Washington State Heritage Capital Project Fund. And that is the grant that requires a two-to-one match, both in volunteer hours and in-kind and cash. And so that is what we're asking the city to match. The Save America's Treasures Grants, one hundred and thirty thousand, the McKeever Trust is fifty thousand. Pierce County Historic Preservation Fund, while they give smaller grants, they give to very specific aspects of the project, and they have funded this project for the last three years, sort of from the Shenandoah Archive, which was a planning grant to actual bulwarks demolition, to the seating of the engine this last year. And then we're tentatively approved for another grant for the rebuilding of the foredeck. The Port of Tacoma has also supported the the project as the RPM Foundation, and of course, the city of Gig Harbor, so I'm here tonight to just give you the update on all of this and where we are, and to confirm the city's commitment for this pledge. If you are interested in knowing where the money's going, how much is If you are interested in knowing where the money's going, how much is in the bank, this is a good way to see that. We try to be as transparent as possible with all of the funds that we receive. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so all of our grants and donations are are seriously considered and we, we really serve at the grace of every donor that supports us. So it's important to take a look at where, how much we've spent, how much we have yet to raise. Where does that funding come from? And I will say that we've had some very generous donors in our area that have significantly contributed to the project. So we thank them all for that as well. So I'm happy to take questions or field any questions or concerns. So.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. That looks like it's going to be amazing and I so enjoyed my tour going down into the Shenandoah and thank you for doing that for me a few months ago. That was really fun. And I can't believe how good it looks now in these pictures compared to just even then when I was there. So lots of improvement, really, really neat. Yes, Councilmember Denson.
Yeah, I'll just echo that. My son and I toured, gosh, it's been a couple of months and it's, it's just so fun. And this is going to be a huge draw for our families, both new and old in the community. So thanks for all your work. It's just so cool.
Yeah, we have an amazing team. Our, we have a leadership right Riley Hall. And then his team of volunteers have just been incredible, really. And we're just so blessed and fortunate to have them all with their wonderful and unique skills. So it's been great.
Yes, Councilmember Wook.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate you on the American's Treasures Grant. I'm always impressed when I see nonprofits that work really hard, applying for grants and get grants. It makes me really want to vote our citizens' money. When they, when they get grants, when you work so hard to get your own grants. And so having funding to help with this project, having funding to make the visitors free to come to the museum, I think is an important part of Gig Harbor. And so I just want to congratulate you for all your grants. Congratulate you on your really hard work. Think, I think we all appreciate here in the city, it's not always easy to apply for grants and to be rewarded with those grants. So good on you, good on you. And we're excited to see this come to fruition for all of our visitors. Thanks, Stephanie.
You bet. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, I don't see any. Thank you again, Stephanie, so much for being here and for all of the work that you do for our museum and, and for the visitors and those that live here that want to just come and see what we've got in there. It's, it's beautiful. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And I just want to, perhaps in a different venue, just see if we need to do an agreement or how exactly that works. So I don't know. Work out.
We will follow up with you on that shortly.
Okay.
Yes, we will, Stephanie. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Yeah. Thank, thank you, Mary. Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Have a great evening. Thank you so much.
Bet. Thank you.
Okay, so for the marriage report, I just wanted to give a brief update on the city council retreat that we have coming up this Saturday. We were hoping so much to have this in person, but you know, COVID. And so we are doing this virtually. It will be on Zoom and open to the public as well, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And we have a wonderful facilitator, Andrew Ballard. He is hilarious and I think we're going to have a really fun time. I think all of council received my email that I sent out just sort of clarify with the draft agenda and sort of clarifying what our, what our goals are. This is the first, Mary, I'll send it to you. This was, this was before you were appointed, so I'll send it to you. So that you're caught up. But yes, we, this is the first year that all of our department directors will be present with us the entire day. And we're so excited for that. And I know that our council and our staff are excited to just really get to know each other a little bit and just come away with some solid strategies and goals in place and a vision for, for future. And so just really looking forward to it and council, if you have any questions prior to Saturday, just let Tony or I know if we can answer anything for you. Same with our staff directors, if you have any questions, logistics or otherwise. Tony, do you have anything that, that I forgot or I should, that you wanted to add about the retreat on Saturday?
I know I've spoken to several council members about it. Just so you know about Mr. Ballard. Mr. Ballard has been doing this kind of work for several decades. He was recommended to me by someone who does a lot of working with organizations, groups, the executive director of the San Cities Association, who's been there for 10 years. I called her and I said, who would you recommend? And the first person that she mentioned was Andrew. She mentioned a couple of others. I also contacted Tracy Burrows at MRSC and asked for her recommendations as well. We sent a request to six different companies to give us a proposal. And to meet with the mayor and I, four of them actually responded. We interviewed them all. And quite frankly, Mr. Ballard was a head and shoulders, in my opinion. The right person for our organization, our group. So I think not only is he fun and we'll have a good time, but he knows what he's doing. And he will help us figure out what our priorities are going to be for the next couple of years and then beyond, if we want to continue working with him.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking forward to several follow-up study sessions, you know, regarding the, the goals and the things that we end up talking about at the retreat. We have some deep diving we're going to do into, into some of these, I'm sure. And so I'm looking forward to those future meetings to kind of just, this retreat is sort of a jumping off point to getting us to where we want to go. So that is all for my report and Tony, do you have anything for our city administrators' report?
Yes, I do. First of all, before I ask Jeff to give us a quick review of CIP, I want to thank Councilmember Wook for reminding us that we are supposed to be giving council a, a update on the CIP. Because we used to do it as part of the Public Works Committee once a month, but since we're not doing committee meetings anymore, we need to incorporate some of those regular reports that we provide to committees into our study sessions. The study session this coming Thursday was a little full, so I asked Jeff to go ahead and pull together a quick report for you. And I'll turn it over to Jeff to provide that report. So Jeff?
Thank you, Tony. So as Tony mentioned, we're going to be providing routine monthly updates to council as part of the first study session of every month. So we plan on that in the future, but also tonight I'm just going to go quickly through a document and I'm just going to say it verbally, what is something that Public Works prepares every two weeks and updates every two weeks, which is a capital improvement project, public outreach update. You receive this as part of your weekly or bi-weekly updates. So I'm just going to quickly read through those projects that are considered active. And then if you have any questions at the end, feel free to let me know. So go ahead and get started. All right. First project is the 38th Avenue Improvements. That's Phase 1A. Sidewalk is now open and available to the public. Payment stripings and symbols are delayed due to poor weather. We've got to have dry, warmer weather. And then minor pavement patching is going to be completed as soon as the weather allows it also. Then next project is the Human Power Watercraft Storage Racks. We're advertising for bid right now. We hope to be at council in February to award a contract unless it falls within our allocated purchasing authority. And then I'll just go to Tony for his approval. The current anticipated date for submitting an application for watercraft storage is early in February. We're working on that. That depends on when we're able to award a contract for the purchase of the materials. Next project is the Austin Honoring Art Symbol. That project is right now being reviewed by Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation down in Olympia. We're waiting for their comments back, which will be soon. We also, in parallel with that, are preparing the construction bid package. As soon as we get word from DAP that we're ready to go, then we'll put that bid package out and then hope to have it awarded by council in March.
And Jeff, that's the, that's the base for the honoring statue to go on.
Yes, thank you for clarifying. That is the concrete base, the statue we already have in our possession, just waiting for the concrete base to be fully permitted. Burnham Drive Half with Frontage Improvements. This is continuing to work with on the design and permitting of the project, specifically the Culvert Crossing and looking for mitigation plan for the area of impact on the wetlands on the side of the road. Kenwood Boulevard Emergency Water Intertie, working with adjacent water purveyors, but they have told us they don't have enough capacity. So I'm trying to connect with the chief maintenance person at St. Anthony's to discuss their operational needs. Because that water main will directly provide, as an intertie, was intended to provide support for St. Anthony's in the event of an emergency. Civic Center Building and Access Control Replacement, we're put that on pause for a bit, trying to get a few other things out of the way. With the construction soon of the Public Works Operations Center, we're going to merge those two types of access and control systems so that we have the same unit on both, both sites. So we're going to jump in on that very soon. Next item, the Civic Center HVAC System Assessment Replacement. As noted, we're going to be hopefully getting an analysis report by a consultant prepared in spring of 2022, so we can have some clear direction to present to council at that time. Community paddlers dock. If you haven't driven by Antich Waterfront Park, you might have missed the large crane and barge out in front, but contractor is out there, been out there for a couple of weeks now. Driving pile, proofing pile, demolishing all of the old dock and float gangway. And today they were cutting off piling underwater and going to be setting concrete beam this week for the grounding foundation. When the tide goes out, the flux need to set on these concrete beams. They're working long shifts and also following the tide. They did some removal of debris for mitigation work down in Cove near Endboat this weekend. So if you saw them down there, also late at night doing that work, that's what they were doing. Speaking of Endboat, the Brick House remodel, everything is completed on that, just waiting for the new parking stalls associated with the project connected with Harborview Stinson Intersection Improvements. And then Endboat Marine Railways, that's being finalized right now. All of the railways are in place, the material's paid for. Just trying to cross all Ts, dot all Is with contractor and be done with that. And then they can, they, the boat shop can start using that facility. Lift Station 6, that's at the intersection of Ryan Street and Cascade Avenue. Contractor has completed safety shoring and excavation of the underground building. And you'll see, if you drive past there, a lot of things are underground, but you'll start to see more and more coming above ground here in the next few months. Lift Station 12, that's at the intersection of Woodhill Drive and Burnham Drive. Contractor is not yet out on site. They're going to be on site as soon as the weather improves. We anticipate that will be first part of March. Murphy's Landing Marina Navigation Channel. City staff has been working with the marina themselves to coordinate the design and permitting. The scope of it was something that we had to discuss because they wanted more done than what we actually agreed to. And we've got that resolved and they're going to be paying for their part. We're going to be paying for our part and we're proceeding with design on that. I'm going to jump down to now Prentice Avenue, Fenimore Half with Street Improvements. We're reviewing 30% design. The next steps in this are going to have a conversation with affected property owners. And then also talk to the general residents in the area about what's being proposed so that we can proceed to 90% design. And then we'll be able to apply for a transportation improvement board grant by no later than August of this year. Hopefully that TIB grant will be successful. We'll know probably by November of this year. If we're successful, then we can be under construction in 2023. Public Works Operations Center, we anticipate bidding in very soon. We have the final plans, the staff's doing the final review on, and then we hope to get that project awarded a few weeks after we go out to bid. We're still working on the final building permit application and then we'll be ready to put it out to bid at that point. Stinson Avenue Overlay might say, oh yeah, well, that project's done. Well, we are still waiting for streetlights. Last we heard contractor is expecting the streetlights to be in at the end of January. So if you see more activity out on the corridor of Stinson Avenue between Grandview and Rosedale Street, that's what's going on. And hopefully as soon as they get those streetlights up, we'll be able to close out that contract and move.
And we've been waiting for those streetlights since about August, haven't we?
Oh, yes. Yes, we have. There was a huge lead time and a shortage of some of the materials and a huge long lead time on those, on those items. So just, just trying to wait patiently. Harborview Stinson Intersection Project, as you know, we've already constructed the first phase of that. A lot of the underground utility works completed. Next phase is the roundabout construction itself. We're getting together and getting ready to put out word to the public about what to expect here come early March. Because that's when we expect contractor to be out on site. We've been having construction meetings with the contractor throughout and we are just getting ready to ramp up and finalize it. The last few items, so the contractor can be out on site soon. Stormwater Utility Revenue Study, we are finalizing the last steps in the stormwater revenue code change that was being proposed. This is following up from a November conversation with council. And so we hope to have first agreement ordinance before council in February. And then following closely on that is utility rate study. This is also going to be a study session in upcoming, hopefully in February. This is actually utility rate study, a little different than stormwater revenue study. Utility rate study is talking about general facilities charges, which is some people call them connection charges. And then monthly rates that we charge people across water utility, storm utility and wastewater utility. And last couple of projects. Treatment Plant Digestor Upgrades, that's under design right now and we hope to have some of the materials purchased very soon. So we can get that in place at the headworks of the treatment plant. Water System Plan Update, this is a lingering update that we've been having. We just need to finalize it and present to council for adoption. We've already presented to council a couple of years ago. But Department of Health had comments and we're trying to close the loop with all of that, bring it to council. And then lastly, well, number three, emergency repairs, similar type. Last outstanding item of Department of Health reviewing comments, just need to send that back to them. That well, though, has been online and operating since June of last year. So that's my very quick summary. And again, we'll go through at the study session on February 17th, I believe it is, will a more detailed schedule of when we see some of these projects proceeding.
Councilmember Wook. Yes. So I was really hoping that, and maybe this will happen in February, you know, in the Public Works, we used to get a spreadsheet. And will we get that again?
Yes, you will. You'll get an updated spreadsheet as part of the council study session packet before the study session. And that will start on February 17th study session.
Okay, that's great. Thanks so much. It's very helpful when people ask us what's happening with what project. It's, it's nice to have it. So you can just refer to that and give them an answer. Thank you.
And that is my report, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jeff. I will now open up public comment on non-agenda items. City Corks Sucker, were there any written comments submitted by email?
No, Mary, we have no written comments submitted today.
Okay. I see there's a couple hands raised in the attendees. Would you like to explain the process, Mr. Sucker, as far as how they go about unmuting and?
Sure, yeah. For all of our residents that are attending on Zoom, you can give a comment during this period by raising your hand on your Zoom window. If you're calling in by phone, you can press star nine on your phone and that will show us that your hand is raised. I will call out your name and when I call out your name, I'll give you access to speak. At that point, you can unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes to uh, give your comments to council. So the first person I will call on tonight is Bill Semel.
Hello, I'm glad to see you tonight, meet with all you folks. Thanks for taking me, my words. Um, I live on Fox Island. I have been a lifelong member of the community. I'm a former commissioner for the Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. Serving from two thousand four to two thousand fifteen. Um, I sent an email to you, so I'm not going to repeat everything I said on it. But I'm basically here tonight to advocate for the city residents to join the Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. Which was created seventeen years ago. And has been very successful and well thought of in the community. You folks know the history of parks. Uh, the last time the residents at Gig Harbor had a chance to vote for a park was in roughly nineteen eighty. When they first time for the PPRD was turned down. Most of the no votes were from Gig Harbor and Fox Island area. So when it was run again in eighty-four, those areas chose not to be in and it was successful. But it was a not the right vehicle for true park district. So in two thousand two, when the state legislature changed the laws that allowed Metropolitan Park Districts outside of. Cities, we went together and successfully passed a, a vote to jo- to make that district. In the seventh year since it's been in, in existence, it's roughly spent or borrowed. Or plans to spend a hundred and twenty-three million dollars so far in the community. That's a very large amount and a lot of good has come from it. But with the growth management plan and all the new growth coming in the city of Gig Harbor, which chose in. Two thousand two, when we were making the districts for the new Metropolitan Park Board, not to be a part of it. Makes it difficult on the district and I feel that our community would be better served if. The citizens of the city of Gig Harbor joined the Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. The Park District has a. Annual budget of about seven million plus. Under current taxation of point seven one per thousand. If the Gig Harbor residents were in the park district, it would. Uh, make another two point one million dollars for parks and recreation programs. And that's the big thing, the recreation programs. The recreation programs at the. And that district is offering now are getting filled up within an hour or two. And um, it, there's a great need in the community for more of that. It would be much easier to provide these services and others. If the citizens of Gig Harbor were in the community of the Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. I would like you to go to www.pennmet.org. See all the points I'm missing out and forgetting, uh, but I think you'd be doing a, a good treat for your citizens if you allowed them to vote. And it's my opinion that they would vote yes to join the district. With the turnover and population, I don't think that a lot of your residents know that they're not in the district. Um, there adds different talks with a lot of them over the years and they've all kind of assumed that. The Penn Met Park District included Gig Harbor also. And uh, let's make it a day where it does, so we can get more park and more recreation. And more good feeling in the community for everyone. That's really about all I have to say. I don't know how much time I have left, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Your time is actually uh, gone over.
Oh, okay, well, excuse me. I thought you'd ring a bell or yank me off the stage. Thanks again for your listening.
Thank you, Mr. Samuel, for your comments. Appreciate it very much. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak?
We have another commenter uh, by phone. Last three digits, the phone number is eight, seven, four. You know, permission to speak. You'll need to unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Yes, Mayor Markley, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you're a little bit soft, but I, I can hear you.
Okay, can the council hear me okay?
They're nodding yes.
Okay, great. Um, congratulations, by the way. Um, I didn't get a chance to um, congratulate you personally on your. Um, being elected to mayor. Um, this is Thomas Wick, I'm here in Gig Harbor. Um, anyway, I wanted to welcome the new council members. And I wanted to bring two specific concerns to the council's attention this evening. Um, one is an ongoing issue that has been ongoing since uh, September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Um, Mr. Piasseki, your city administrator is intimately familiar with this. Um, I was just doing some brief notes here while the other um, presenters were giving their um, speeches, but. Um, anyway, this was a public, request for public records and I submitted it September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. And um, this of course preceded Mr. Piasseki and the, the prior city administrator as well. But um, dollar amounts that were given um, to the city um, to pay for these records. And if I'm incorrect, I would ask Mr. Piasseki to correct me, but I believe it was a twenty dollars to start with. And I was told there'd be a few dollars charged here and there for a few records here and there over an unspecified period of time. That money was returned to me and the city said we can't keep advanced payments. And then I spent a hundred dollars, then I sent two hundred dollars, then I sent three hundred dollars, then I sent a thousand dollars, then two thousand, then four thousand, then eight thousand. And Mr. Piasseki said the city considers this request for public records abandoned, it's no longer active valid. And it is valid, and I think um, my most recent check for eight thousand dollars would say that a citizen. Um, still is in need of those public records. And I did ask Mr. Piasseki to let a judge in a competent court decide whether um. You know, there's fines and penalties due. Um, so I just asked him to go ahead and complete the request, charge me accordingly. And I just got a very recent email from him saying, your check's being returned and your request is no longer. We consider it abandoned. So that, that's a concern. I would ask the council to have a discussion about that. Um, the other one is, I got a recent email from Mr. Piasseki where he informed me. That the city of Gig Harbor is now turning over city-owned, city-operated infrastructure. To housing development, um, homeowners associations. And I, I, I'm, I'm choosing my words carefully because I want, of course, maintain professionalism, but I find that difficult to believe. Um, the city of Gig Harbor is, they own and operate the drainage system on the Scancy Avenue Drainage. And private, of course, entities discharge into that with the city of Gig Harbor's permission and permitting. But I got an email here um, regarding what's my concern was coming out of the city-owned infrastructure. Um, it says all operation and maintenance concerns with these private stormwater facilities should be directed to the homeowners association for each. Plat or their representative. And when I read that, I, it, it made me sit back a little bit because I'm going, this is the city of Gig Harbor saying, hey. We own it, we operate it, we maintain it, but if you got a problem with what we're dump discharging on you, follow up with a homeowners association. And uh, so anyway, it was very concerning. And that's something else I've, I've been asked at the council. I'm respectfully requesting that they have a discussion about that this evening. Um, because it does.
Mr. Wick, you're about thirty seconds over. Um, can you wrap up in a couple of seconds?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for allowing me. And the other thing I wanted to point out, um, and thank you, Mayor Markley, for letting me finish up. Um, is that the private developer actually said in their state permit to discharge. Said they were discharging to the city of Gig Harbor's stormwater system. And I think that's something I would ask the council to consider. So if you look at the comment I received and you look at the state permit, it's like, well. The developer says it belongs to the city of Gig Harbor, but Mr. Piasseki says, nope, you follow up with homeowners associations. So thank you, and I, I really appreciate you allowing me to go slightly over this evening. Thank you much.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Um, are there any other raised hands, uh, Josh?
Uh, no additional uh, people waiting to comment for this one.
Okay, all right, I will close the public comment on non-agenda items. And we will go to new business one, which was number six on our consent agenda. The um, annual pavement maintenance and repair professional services contract, and I believe Mr. Langham, are you prepared to? Answer questions on this item?
Yes, I'm prepared to answer questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, so council member Wook, you brought this uh, forward off of the consent agenda. Would you like to? Um, start with your questions for Mr. Langham?
Sure, I, I talked with Director Lambham earlier about this. Um. Normally, and, and we did discuss this in the Public Works Commission, but we have four new council members. And this is a wonderful project of paving and, and. And getting a consultant in order to do the pre-work. And it's a, it's a wonderful project because we've also included now some ADA work. And, and so I'm fully in favor of this, but because. Our, our new council members were not um, able to listen to this in public works or someplace else. I thought it would be appropriate if Mr. Langham could go over this a little bit. That's all.
Um, I can give just a high-level overview, but I would recommend that for any detailed discussions, we could bring it back as a study session item unless. Uh, Mr. Price, like he says otherwise.
No, I think to say a high-level overview for now uh, would be adequate.
I agree with that.
Okay, so just quickly, um. The city performs pavement maintenance based off of a pavement rating system, pavement conditioning index is what we call it. It's a lot that goes into that. We look at areas of the city. Uh, all of our roadways, public roadways. Once every two years, half the city one year, the other half the other year. And so we rate our roadways, we look at what's needed, and then we go into areas, make proposals to come in and do annual pavement maintenance. It says annual, but really we don't, we, we usually queue up a, a, a few years of pavement maintenance, so we. Cause it's cost-effective to bring one contractor in to do a lot of work. We have a variety of methods we use to uh, improve our pavements. Uh, and that includes what we call mill and fill, grind down and then repave it with new asphalt. Um, sometimes we have to completely re, rebuild the roadway, including subgrade. Sometimes we just do chip seal. Uh, there's something to keep in mind also is terms of funding is how do we pay for this? Uh, there's a lot of different pots of money we can pull from. Uh, some of them are grants. Uh, that's how we did, paid for a lot of our Stinson Avenue overlay, but then also um, we can. Pull money that's for Rosedale Street and North be paid for out of our hospital benefits zone revenues. So we can pay for that area with specific revenues. And then, uh, without going into too much more detail. Um, we do, as council member Wook alluded to, we do include other projects that are associated with pavement maintenance. Some of them we are required to do, ADA requirements require us anytime we grind through and do a structural repair on a roadway that. Uh, in, affects a crosswalk or an ADA ramp, we have to replace and make that entire crosswalk or ramp ADA compliant. Uh, we also do throw in a few other of those repairs when we're in the area because it's cost-effective. Uh, also, sometimes we might take a, an intersection that is, that we need to completely repair. And uh, make that intersection instead of having signalized loop detection in there, we'll take and change the way. We uh, control that intersection through, in this instance, video detection. So. There's a whole lot that goes into the, um, but uh, it's definitely worth a conversation and much more depth through a study session. Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks, Jeff. That's good. Um, a couple of questions. I'm assuming that uh, these are, this maintenance contract is for some of our larger pavement overlays and, and, and repair. Do we have in-house staff that like takes cares of small potholes or minor things?
Yes, we do. Our in-house staff will take care of potholes um, and minor uh, payment issues, but that's all just considered very temporary. Right, sometimes it's literally. Yes, we do. That's, that is, that's a very good point, Tony. We do crack ceiling, uh, if not every year, then every other year.
So, and the second question I had is um, the traffic control signal loops at Olympic and Point Fosse. Are they, are they going to be redone? Cause I, I remember earlier at a city council meeting before I have a city councillor. Uh, that was mentioned that some people wanted that fixed, but it was going to take quite a bit of work to get that done. Does this include then? Uh, a rebuild or reconfiguration?
At this point, this contract before you do tonight only re- removes and replaces some detector loops in the. Olympic Drive westbound, so essentially the lanes coming from Highway sixteen. Or that's the only section that we're going, of that intersection, we're going to remove and replace. So we're just going to replace those detector loops with new detector loops. If we're doing the entire intersection. We would take the entire intersection and make it all video detection, which is more reliable.
Okay, cool, thanks.
There any other questions? Yes, I, council member Lykins.
Hi, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Jeff, just a quick question for future um, budgeting. And the hospital benefit zone, that year, that funding. Um, refresh for me if I believe it's going to be expiring and what year that will be expiring.
I might hand that over to Finance Director Rodenbach. I don't remember the exact year it's expiring, but he might.
Uh, I, don't quote me on this too much, down to the year, but I believe we started drawing on it in twenty eleven, and so we have thirty years. And so that would be twenty forty-one.
Oh, so quite a while. Okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, council member Wook.
I move to approve consent agenda number six.
Um. Okay, do we need to be more detailed than that, uh, City Clerk sticker, or is that good to go?
That, that should be sufficient. We'll just use the motion that's listed on the agenda bill. Don't worry with me right now, but.
All right, thank you so much. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you so much. So we will now move on to new business item two. Which is the appointment or the election of mayor pro temp. And this is going to be reported on by City Clerk Josh Sticker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, this is a procedural thing that is required by the Gig Harbor Municipal Code, chapter two point one four. Every year, the city council must elect one of their uh, members to be a mayor pro temp. Um, past tradition is that the mayor recommends someone to serve as the pro temp and council. Uh, deliberates and then appoints a person. And this year, Mayor Markley has recommended the appointment of Councilmember Robin Denson.
Are there any clarifying questions from council? I don't see any. Um, Josh, were there any public comments submitted?
We have none submitted. Um, I don't see any raised hands, but I'll remind. People that are at home that they can comment by pushing the raise hand button or pressing star nine on their phone. And I see no raised hands.
Seeing none. Uh, any council deliberation? Uh, yes, council member Wook.
Yes, I move to appoint Councilmember Robin Denson as mayor pro temp.
A second.
Great. Any other council comments or deliberation? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstain? Great, motion passes seven zero. Congratulations, Councilmember Denson.
Thank you. No, I'm excited. I'm excited to serve with you.
Thank you. Okay, and moving on to new business item number three. Appointment of council representation, representation to advisory bodies. And again, a report comes from City Clerk Josh Sticker.
Thank you again, Mayor. Um, this is a uh, summary of the. Advisory bodies that are in the local area that the city council typically has traditionally had representation on. Um, at this time, we've just collected them all together and asked council to make recommendations on who they would like to see appointed to each of these bodies. Um, these, uh, often these recommendations are. Subject to the approval of the body themselves, so we'll let the, let the advisory body know we've recommended. Um, and then they will make do the appointment process. We've checked in with council and let them, given a brief description of each body and asked them which ones they might be interested in serving on. Um, after receiving all of your responses, we've uh, given them to the mayor and the mayor's made the following recommendations for appointment. The first on the list is the City of Gig Harbor Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. This committee is a city committee. It requires that we have an elected official serve as the chair. The mayor's recommendation for this appointment is Councilmember Storset. The Pierce County Regional Council meets monthly, and they typically have city representation. This is one where we'll make a recommendation, and I believe they will approve the appointment. For this body, we, the mayor is recommending Councilmember Wook. Comanero's Airport Advisory Committee has a position that they have asked council to fill. This is a non-voting position. They just attend the meetings as an observer and a commenter on city policy. This recommendation for this appointment was Councilmember Barber. Pierce County Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee, this one's made up of 15 members. This is one that Pierce County Council appoints to, I believe, so we'll make a recommendation to them. The city, or the mayor's recommendation for this appointment is Councilmember, Councilmember, sorry, lost my list. Councilmember Denson. And we'll also-
Mayor pro temp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll recommend that-
Thank you.
Public Works Director Jeff Langham serve as the alternate on this board. The Chamber of Commerce, Gig Harbor Chamber of Commerce has a government relations committee. That committee advises the chamber, really ramps up during the legislative session on issues that impact businesses locally. Councilmember Rodenberg expressed interest on this one, so the mayor is recommending him for appointment to that board. The West Sound Partners for Ecosystem Recovery, or Whisper, is a committee that's locally based that tackles ecosystem issues. I think it chiefly deals with sand and recovery and that type of thing. Councilmember Henderson has expressed interest on that, and Mayor Markley has recommended him for appointment to that board. And the last one is our Gig Harbor Parks Commission Liaison. Parks Commission is a city-appointed board who has asked for a council member to attend their meetings and take notes and give input where needed. And this committee that the mayor has recommended, Councilmember Lycan's for appointment. And that sums it up. There are seven appointments for each of the seven council members on this list.
Great, thank you, Josh. Are there any clarifying questions from council? I guess, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Josh. I have a question. I noticed that as far as alternatives go, or alternates, we only have one for the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee. Are you, do you think there's a possibility of having alternates on each one of these committees? For us, in case we can't, you know, we're sick or something, we can't make one of the meetings?
Not on all of them. Some of them, like the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, that's not, not a possibility. The Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee is the only one that I'm aware of that has an alternative. Pierce County Regional Council has considered the mayor as an alternate at times. But to my knowledge, we haven't had an alternate on the other committees.
Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Wook?
Yes, you know, we've had a liaison between the Parks Commission from the council to the Parks Commission in the past, and it's worked, I think, very successfully. And from what I understand, Parks members have appreciated the interest and respect and support of council. And at the time that we established that position several years ago, there was also some talk about having a liaison between council and the planning commission. That never did happen. But I, I was, I'm very much interested in having Roger Henderson be a liaison between council and the planning commission. How, how does this happen? How can we go about, how can we go about putting this together and making this happen?
So the role of liaison and city minister to Piaszeki, which I mean here too, but the role of liaison is not an officially adopted position anywhere in the city's policies or codes. One of the things that I think we want to talk to the new council about going forward is amending council guidelines to kind of allow for that for our committees, along with some other procedural requirements for committees. That's a discussion that we'll probably have at a study session down the road. Some committees, it's maybe not appropriate to have a liaison. I know the planning commission does some statutes or other required things where it would not be appropriate for council to be in attendance. Lodging Tax Advisory Committee has a very clear role for council on it. So we would need to really kind of get into each one of those specifically to determine if it's appropriate or not. So I, I think that's something that we should have on our radar to, to get done, but maybe not this evening.
Thank you. So it sounds like to do this would probably be a good idea to discuss when we're talking about council rules and procedures? Or would this be a work session, or how would we go forward from this?
I think that's a good conversation, having a work session. If we're going to change our rules, then, then we should have a study session to, to talk about what council wants the rules to be.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. I guess, Councilmember Barber?
The only thing that I was going to add is just to echo the Parks liaison or in the liaison function. And I look forward to having that discussion as a whole, because I'm a firm believer in strengthening that connection between our public and citizen bodies and the council. I think it's a really important one. And also to codifying it and putting some parameters around it so that both parties understand what the role of the liaison is. So I look forward to that study session when we can do that.
Thank you. I guess, Councilmember Storset?
Yes, I guess somewhat of a clarifying question. Josh and Tony can kind of cover this a little bit for me, but even though we are, you know, representation from the council, these advisory boards, we can still attend these meetings if we, you know, of course, find them of interest to go directly to it and make comments or make contributions if we have them. Is that correct?
For the most part, yes, but there may be a few meetings where it would be inappropriate, and in particular, it'd be the planning commission. If they are hearing something that they're making recommendations that comes up to the council, ask and we'll let you know what is going on and if it's appropriate or not appropriate for you to go.
Understood, thank you.
The other issue too is that when we have these advisory committees that are meeting and they're discussing something that's of particular interest to council, we cannot have a quorum of council show up at the same time just to even observe the meeting, because that runs into an OPMA violation. So that puts us in a position where we have to tell some people they can attend and some people they can't attend. So that's something to keep in mind as well.
And if you do, if you really want to attend something on any of the committees, commissions, call me or call Josh and we'll let you know what's going on and whether it's appropriate or not. Or if we're going to have five, four, or five council members that are really interested, then we'll let you know that.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Great question. Thank you so much. Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, I'll open up the public comment. Josh, were there any written public comments submitted?
No written comments this evening, and I don't see any hands raised. I'll remind people again that you can raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom window if you want to make a comment tonight, or press star nine if you're calling in by phone. And I do not see any raised hands in our attendee list.
Not seeing any. Any other council deliberation or action?
We just need a motion, you are.
Yep. I, yes, count, who was first? Who is first? Councilmember Wook?
Why don't you let Councilmember Barber go first?
I, I'm going in order of hands, but thank you, Councilmember Barber. And you're on mute, I think. There you go.
So I move to recommend appointment of council members to the advisory bodies as listed. And thank you, Councilmember Wook.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lycan. Great. And Councilmember Wook, did you have any additional comments or?
I did not.
Okay, okay. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion passes, seven zero. Thank you, council. Are there any council reports or comments tonight?
Wait, 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 here I am.
I thought, I heard, I saw your mouth going. I was wondering if you were trying to talk. Yes, Councilmember Wook?
I attended the audit exit interview today, and I give, I'd like to give a great big thank you and a great big shout out to our Finance Director Dave Rodenberg and, and his right-hand lady, Jackie O'Clare. They did a fantastic job, is what I heard from the audit folks, and, and no problems with the city. So I think that's a really good thing. So thank you so much, Director Rodenberg. Anyway, and to our staff members who have tested positive for COVID. Keep the faith, and we'll all get through this together. And I'm really sorry if those of you who are affected by this, but take good care of yourselves and your families. You're important to all of us.
Thank you.
Yes. We all echo those sentiments, Councilmember Wook. Thank you very much for that. And any other council reports or comments this evening? Okay, I'm not seeing any announcement of upcoming meetings. We have our city council study session this Thursday, January 27th at 2:00 PM. And then we have our city council retreat this Saturday, January 29th at 9:00 AM. And then we have a city council, a joint meeting with the planning commission on Thursday, February 3rd at 5:00 PM. So those are upcoming meetings. You can find all those on our calendar, also on our city's website. And so now we will go into executive session for approximately 10 minutes. If we need to extend, we will let you know, City Clerk Sticker, by an email. So those that are on the call in the attendees, go ahead and stay on this call. Is that correct, Josh? And then you want to explain the procedure for council members? I believe there was an email link that was sent for an executive session link.
Yes, council members, you'll need to sign off of this meeting and then sign back into the link for the executive session that was emailed to you this morning.
And Josh, did you send that to Matt, Jeff, and Katrina as well?
Yes, everyone should be sent.
Perfect. All right.
And we're going into exec session to consider the acquisition of real estate per RCW 422100 of subsection 1B.
Thank you, city minister. And we, it is 7:16, we will be back, or 7:17, we'll be back approximately 7:27. We'll let you know if we need more time.
The city council executive session has been extended an additional five minutes until 7:32 PM. The executive session has been extended an additional five minutes to 7:37 PM.
I think we have everybody.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting of January 24th, 2022. The time is 7:38 PM. And yes, Councilmember Denson?
Thank you, Mayor Markley. I move to authorize the mayor to complete and sign a purchase and sale agreement for the property and offer price as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wook? Do I open it for council comments?
Yes.
Okay, are there any council comments on this? Okay, seen none. We have a motion on the table and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstain? Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. Thank you, council. All right, unless there is anything else for the good of the order, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
The second of that, Rodenberg? Many of you, okay.
Many.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.